Township planning meeting to order for October 26, 2022 for the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Absent excused.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Christopher Daggy.
Here.
Chris Altonan.
Absent excused.
Christine Holcomb.
Absent excused.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Muesling here, Robert Jacobs.
Here.
And Kathy Schweickart.
Here, thank you. Item number four is approval slash amendments to the agenda. Anything? Motion?
I move to approve the amendment to the agenda.
A second.
You have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Absent excused.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Altonan.
Absent excused.
Christine Holcomb.
Same thing.
Absent. Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Bob Jacobs.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickart.
Yes, thank you. Item number five is approval of minutes for September 28, 2022. Any discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second and Robert, you okay?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Absent excused.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Altonan. Christine Holcomb is absent. Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Robert Jacobs.
Yes.
And Kathy.
Yes, thank you. Item number six is public hearing. We have three items for the public hearing. I'm going to read the rules before we start, which is one, all comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Two, individuals wishing to speak have time limits, three minutes for each member of a general public, and six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group. Three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the sign-in sheet provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Four, each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. And six is public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item. At this particular point, I'm going to move to item 6A, which is the rezoning application for... That's a long number. And I see you're already at the podium. Go ahead, Steve.
Madam Chairman, we've been in contact with the company, Crown, which is the Ambassador Bridge Company. They're asking to be withdrawn or tabled from this meeting tonight. They're contemplating whether or not they actually need the rezoning or not.
Oh, so they're going to withdraw?
Mm-hmm. No table, please. They want to keep the option open.
Okay.
And we will have to republish the public hearing though.
And, okay.
Why is it tabled?
They're requesting it be tabled because it's the question on whether a rezoning is necessary for public improvements.
That's right.
So we need a motion for that, then?
Yes.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to table the rezoning of property from C1, from R1 to C3, property 74-14-631-0071-000.
So we have no... Okay, motion by Mark, seconded by Chris. It's okay. Let me read the numbers to you for the property for rezon. Oh, sorry.
Correct.
Correct. Sorry, thank you. Which then means, as Steve said, we have to republish if we get that far. So everybody understand motion?
Deborah Addy is absent.
Yep.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Altonan is absent, Christine Holcomb absent, Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Bob Jacobs.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickart.
Yes, thank you. I will now move on to item 6B, which is 8575 Colony Drive SALU accessory dwelling unit, public hearing. I opened the public hearing at 7:10. Steve or Karen?
At the last meeting, we reviewed the special approval land use application for the accessory dwelling unit at 8575 Colony Drive. At the time, there were some of the criteria we were awaiting for a rent confirmation from the applicant. The applicant has provided confirmation that the criteria will be met and therefore we approve. We approved the special land use application. Or we recommend approval, sorry.
Nope, no, I get it. We knew what you meant. Thank you. Is the applicant here or a representative? Do you have anything further you'd like to say?
No, not really unless there are any questions we can answer or I can answer.
Can you please state your name?
My name is Herb Blackstock.
Okay.
With Blackstock, Alzander Associates. We're the original architect for the home as well as the structure.
Okay, thank you. Any members of the audience who would like to come forward as far as this public hearing is concerned? One more time, anybody for this public hearing? I see no one. So close the public hearing at 7:12. Board members? Comments, questions, anything?
Looks like he's completed most of it. Some of the stuff he can't complete, obviously. Few within six and I see all of them uncompletion. Really two outstanding ones, really. Right?
Looks like everything's in order. Any questions, comments? No? Well, I would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special land use for 8575 Colony Drive. Support?
Is that supported, Mark?
Mark's supporting.
Deborah Addy is absent, Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Altonan is absent, Christine Holcomb absent, Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Bob Jacobs.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickart.
Yes. All right, you're approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Item number 6C. Steve? Oh, this is a public hearing too. How about we open the public hearing at 7:14?
This is very simple.
Wait a minute, hold on. Do we need to stamp anything for the last gentleman who was just leaving?
Good question. I don't know if you have anything to stamp with you.
I don't either.
We'll catch along, we'll catch.
Okay. We used to have the big maps, but we don't have those or site plans.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Steve.
This is a very simple change, the ordinance. If you go to the section 3.11 under lakes, we're adding on the second sentence, opposite lot line, abutting a public or private thoroughfare. We're adding private thoroughfare. It's been contentious in some of the cases we've had that permits that Gary has handled and so we're asking for that change.
Anybody in the audience who would like to come forward for the public hearing? Ask one more time, anybody in the audience? Any members of the board have any questions, comments? Then I would close the public hearing at 7:15. And then we probably need a motion.
Make the motion to approve the tax amendment zoning ordinance number 126, section 3.11, without amendments.
Support?
Without amendments.
We're not adding any amendments to it.
Oh, I got you.
Say that or not, but...
What do you think? Do we need to say that too or no? So go ahead, restate your motion. How's that?
Perfect. Will we approve the tax amendment zoning ordinance number 126, section 3.11?
Should be recommend approval to the township board.
Okay, I'll get it right. Recommend approval to the township board for the tax amendment zoning ordinance number 126, section 3.11.
Just going to give him a moment to write.
And that was...
So we have, the motion was made by Christopher Daggy. And who was the second on this one? Mark? Any discussion by anybody? No? Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy is absent, Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Altonan is absent, Christine Holcomb is absent, Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Robert Jacobs.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickart.
Yes, thank you. That concludes all of item number six. So we're going to move on to item number seven, which is new business, but we don't seem to have any new business under item number seven. So I'm going to move on to item number eight, which is unfinished business. We have two items there. We have 8A, which is On the Rocks SALU. So, Steve, we had some questions last time. You have some updates for us?
Yes. At the last meeting, you recall there were some concerns on the requirements that you had placed on the business under special land use, limiting hours of the restaurant or outside of the outside area of the restaurant. And there was some discrepancy with maybe some of the administration of the police department following the liquor control commission's hourly hours. I did speak at your request to the township attorney, Christine Anderson, who informed me that the special land use takes precedent over any liquor control or police department review of the matter. That they need to apply, abide by the special land use requirements and timing and dates unless you amend them.
So what does that mean, Steve? Does he continues on to do, getting permitted by the state to have special events?
He can have special events, but he's got to, can't have those outside of it. This is according to the attorney. He's got to abide by the hours of operation that you have listed in your special land use. Got to follow what they agreed to, basically. But he does have the right to come back to you as they are for an amendment.
And he's looking for an amendment, or they're looking for an amendment from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. And outdoor entertainment from 12 noon to 10 p.m. I don't see him here.
I don't see the applicant here, no.
No. And we did give him notice he'd be back.
Yes.
On the agenda for this week.
What's his current hours right now?
I don't know if it's in the documentation I have in front of me right now.
I think it goes to 10 p.m. anyways, doesn't it?
It does.
I think he does.
It does, but he can only do it like four times a year or something. He's got to do a special thing for four times a year.
But when he does have four times a year, it goes past the 10.
No.
Oh, it doesn't?
No. That's just to let him go to 10. Other than that, he...
It was, yeah, outdoor entertainment.
Yeah.
Oh, for the special event.
Yeah, yeah.
Open for business and...
Right. He's still got the tiki bar out there, right?
Outdoors from noon until 8, it says.
Right.
Right now it is. So the outdoor right now is from...
He wanted to extend it to 10 if I...
Yeah, but what we're dealing with, what he is right now is noon to 8.
Yes.
He wants to extend 10 to 10. Right now, he has no outdoor entertainment, if I remember what I wrote down last time. But he wants to now ask for outdoor entertainment from noon until 10.
Correct. Basically asking to amend your previously approved special land use with those conditions.
Was that seven days a week? I don't see where it's written here.
He wants it to five days he's open. So I believe that's like Wednesday.
I think it was seven days a week, but I don't think he...
Because I don't see where it stated which days. I think he may have said here that he only wanted certain days, but I don't see it in the paperwork.
Yeah.
My recommendation to you is that you don't act upon this until he's here. Do you get clarification?
I don't have a problem with that because we've talked back and forth a few times on this, but we now know that the special land use takes precedent over, according to our attorney. So that's probably a big change.
The season's over, so he wasn't in like a big hurry.
No, he was not. No.
I know one of the other matters that we had with this was what Blue Horse, Cabana Blue was going to be asking for so we could maintain.
Should be consistent.
Consistent aspects between the two.
Especially if you're challenged.
Have we heard any more from Cabana Blue on what, if they're going to... Because I know they were opposed to you, but again...
Yeah. They have, I haven't seen anything other than their previously approved site plan that, or special land use that we just signed tonight.
And that includes no outside entertainment, right?
That's right.
Just as an FYI, he did drop off a site plan at the building department today, so.
Perfect.
Nobody's got a chance to review it at all.
So maybe, as much as I hate to say this, maybe it sounds reasonable that since your applicant isn't here, we still have the difficult, not difficulty, trying to be consistent with Cabana Blue that we just today got from the building department, a new request.
Well, he also stated too that, you know, Cabana Blue's got those garage doors. You just open those and it's outside.
Can we postpone this until next year?
Sure. It could take the time.
Usually we just postpone it for one month, but I'm open to suggestions. Any thoughts?
Why are you thinking next year? Well, we're going to have the winter months coming up here pretty quick. And, I mean, we can do it next month, but... I just said that.
And the site plan just came in, you didn't know, but it just came in today. So what's your turnaround on something for Cabana Blue?
If there's a new site plan at Cabana Blue, we could have it done by the next meeting.
Actually, our next meeting is going to come up real quick because of Thanksgiving. Our next meeting is only a couple of weeks out. When I think about it, because of the Thanksgiving holidays.
So it's going to be earlier?
It's going to be earlier. I don't have it in front of me. It's what?
Ninth?
The ninth. So I'm saying no for next month.
Yeah, I think so.
No sense.
We won't make it.
No.
So...
It's back to the year again.
I think maybe it may be, you might be back to January 1.
And Christmas and...
Because...
Right.
Our meeting for November is the ninth and then the December one is, I think, bumped up just a little bit, maybe? Yeah. So realistically, by the time you need to have time to go through it, maybe December, but more likely January.
I could have it done by December. That's not a problem if it's accurate and it has everything it needs here.
So I guess my questions are, is all the outside entertainment is all subject to special land use approval, correct? Or do we have anything in our ordinance that...
Which one we talking about? I'm sorry.
For...
On the rocks?
On the rocks.
On the rocks is, they can abide by what you agreed to originally.
No, but I'm saying for any outdoor entertainment, for any business in Clay Township.
You can add those conditions to anyone.
But that's all special land use, correct?
Correct.
So I guess the real question is, is are there any locations in Clay Township that already have outdoor entertainment? And do we want to allow that outdoor entertainment? And what hours do we want to allow it?
About Browns?
Yep.
Outdoor entertainment?
Was that ever given to them or do they just have it?
Who knows?
Right.
I don't remember though.
Muskmid Bay.
Muskmid, yeah, outdoor entertainment.
Munchies Bay.
Right.
Is there a way to find out in the township so we're consistent?
I can, we can check.
Check it out?
Even neighboring things, Algonack, you know, you got the Harbor Club, right?
Yeah.
You got AJ's up there. He has entertainment on the river there.
Deckers used to.
Yeah, Deckers used to.
Deckers have it, yep.
Maybe we could check into that and see if we have...
Yep, yep.
If they never had to go through site plan or special land use approval for other reasons and you wouldn't have hours operations on it, so they're abiding by the state regulations. So we'll have to check that.
Sounds like we need to do some research before we make some decisions.
Be happy to.
And they'd have to comply with local lawyers' ordinance.
Right. Yep.
And that would be the government, that would really be the... As long as they were in compliance with that. That's, I mean, for us to be most consistent between any of them, really, we need to find out if any have been set up through the special land use and if we approve anything, we need to stay consistent between businesses.
Maybe something needs to be created.
Yep. So, because it's kind of set...
Instead of feeling around, just, yeah, this is...
Probably should do the research as he was...
Well, yeah, do some of that, you know, with the community wants.
Once Steve has the research, I'm sure he wouldn't hesitate to give us a recommendation of if we need a different type of ordinance or to go along with it. I don't know, we'll see.
Well, I'm just thinking if Browns is, you know, I've not really spent any time down there, but if we're kind of setting the precedent for outdoor entertainment with what we're going to allow the businesses to abide by, then we kind of have to figure out what we're willing to do.
Put restrictions on it. If we're going to allow it, put restrictions on it somewhere instead of just carte blanche, you know?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we had, you know, if we're going to allow it, we need to figure out what we want to allow.
That's right.
Because we're setting a precedent for the most part, so that's...
Think that's a good idea.
And the noise ordinance is fairly vague.
Yeah.
It's ambiguous, as you put it the other time.
Which isn't good for the residents or the business because it doesn't really clarify what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. This is kind of, kind of harsh, harder on the police department because how do they enforce something that's vague?
It's subjective.
Yep.
And the police don't really enforce noise.
Yeah, I don't know how...
They respond to complaints, but...
Yeah.
How far do we go with this, you know, because... I mean, just if the boats roll down that canal at 2 o'clock in the morning, a lot of this could be...
Well, you have to keep in mind...
Then they're going to pull in their dock, turn their radio on, have a few drinks.
Right now, we're just trying to deal with outdoor entertainment and things of all. So if we can stick to the outdoor entertainment, find out what is actually happening in our community.
Yeah.
Being a recreation and entertainment community.
Yes.
That's where we're at.
And a boat would be, wouldn't be a continuous noise either, or a band would be continuous.
I've lived by a marina.
Was that? Two hours-ish unless they're having... Realistically.
Yeah, I mean, but it's a long time.
So what do you think, Steve? Does that make sense for...
Yeah, we'll do the research for you and come back.
So at this particular point, we probably need a motion for tabling?
Till the December meeting or the earliest?
The earliest would be December.
What is the date of the December meeting?
What's going to be like the 18th or something like that?
I was going to say the 18th. Is it realistic? I mean, Steve could be ready, I just...
December 7?
Oh, it is, but that's early too.
Give you everything you want to do.
Yeah, that's right.
So I'll make a motion to table decision.
Hold on one second. Do we want to go to the first year or do we want to go to the December 7th? Because it just goes.
Just go to the 7th. It'll be another thing we got done this year.
Sorry?
Go to the 7th.
Okay.
To table decision for On the Rocks.
Six weeks or something.
We have a special meeting with this issue? Hash something out with a planner.
2022.
I'm not sure what you mean, special meeting.
Well, if we're going to come up with...
Well, I think he's just going to get the research, get the data, look at the data, throw some ideas against the wall, right?
Well, that'd be...
Maybe come up with something.
Well, I guess we can do it at the meeting, but I was looking at a special, at a special meeting.
We could, but I don't know if it's necessary at this point. Steve, once he looks at the information, if he...
Well, I'm all for doing it, doing it, doing it once and getting it done right first time.
I agree with that.
Instead of hashing it out, this is our third session here.
Well, yeah, it does run into month after month, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so our motion is...
The motion is to table decision for On the Rocks property ID 74-14-496-0013-00010. 002, 003, 004, 010, until the December 7th, 2022 meeting.
That's a motion. Any support for it?
Yeah, support.
Mark? Any further discussion?
Steve, I hate to burden you with all this stuff, but can you put something together for us to look at? Probably for the next meeting in November.
In two weeks. Probably won't be able to get that research done in time.
If you think we need to do something, then before that, let us, you know, before the December 7th meeting, but...
Me too. I can see what I can do, but I can't guarantee I can pull that stuff in time.
Just bullet points if nothing else, take a look at.
Oh, well, okay.
And I would suggest also the other commissioners here to do the same thing and maybe compile it to an email in your queue and see what we come up with. We're not going to have a special meeting. We can do an email.
We've got to be careful with emails because if we're emailing everybody, this doesn't work so well, according to the classes we've done. So you might want to send everything to Cindy, who has the ultimate authority to send everything else out. Because they don't want to be violating anything.
I don't know about Cindy's email because once I open it, it disappears. I have no idea where it goes.
You mean Cindy Babish's email?
Yeah. Yeah, I have no idea where it goes.
No.
Spam trash archives, I have no idea.
Joke's on you, yes.
I can't even search for it. It's like.
Does it go to your spam and you have to search or?
I, I went everywhere.
I have to say, I have never had a difficulty, so maybe you and Cindy have a special meeting.
I couldn't be searched, it's kind of different.
Thanks.
Just a thought, maybe you and Cindy have a special meeting, let us know how it goes, okay? All right, so we got the motion by.
I made the motion. Mark seconded.
Any more discussion on the outside? Everybody don't understand?
Deborah Addy is absent. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Hultunin is absent. Christine Holcomb is absent. Tom Kozel?
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Bob Jacobs?
Yes.
Kathy Schweickart.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Steve, too. Okay, the next item is eight B, which is a zoning ordinance text amendment, solar energy systems.
Last month, you received a draft. There was a suggestion that, uh, we put a statement in here to, uh, that it concerns glare from these units. I did on page three of your draft, G specify that no ground mounted solar energy system shall be designed and located in a manner so the glare is not visible for surrounding properties and we put the same thing under the commercial. I did talk to Mr. Daggy, uh, prior to the meeting and, uh, he, he kind of suggested that, and I think it's a great idea, instead of saying from surrounding properties and roadways, it's a from surrounding properties, roadways and waterways. I can make that change or any others you guys want tonight and we can schedule this public hearing for the December meeting.
Isn't there something else about the height, too?
Oh, you're talking about, we were talking about flat roofs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I missed that then. So I guess that question was what?
I think, wasn't it your, your question, Robert, about flat roofs, not extend? Oh, was it yours?
If you put a solar array up on a residential flat roof, whether, seem like it, it couldn't be above the, the roof line, the way it.
Okay. All right, so.
That's okay.
So you're talking about the distance above a flat roof that a, uh, a high limit on a flat roof, basically?
Yeah, cause they're saying, like, it says, no part of the solar energy system erected on the roof shall extend beyond the roof's peak.
Okay.
I think, or a flat roof.
And then in instance, a flat roof shall not exceed three feet or something like that.
Yeah, three feet, right. Or.
Cause they need to probably do maintenance. Yeah, give them some room, right?
If there's a chimney or an exhaust flute, it shouldn't be above that.
Okay. So we can either come back next month with these, there's, we're not in a hurry, we come back with these changes or we can schedule a public hearing pending those changes.
Roof ventilation.
I'm okay with scheduling a public hearing.
Yeah.
How about you?
Yeah, I agree.
Want to make a motion? I'm gonna try. It talks really slow.
So how, how would I start this? Um, I'll make a motion to.
Schedule the public hearing for.
Schedule a public hearing.
For November? December, I'm sorry.
December seventh.
For the proposed zoning ordinance amendments for solar energy systems.
Basically, if you read number eight.
Yep. For the proposed zone ordinance text amendment, solar energy systems.
Then Steve, you'll make those two. There's only two corrections that we need. Waterways and the flat roof.
So I have motion to schedule a public hearing for December seventh, twenty twenty-two for text amendment of solar energy, uh, with discussed corrections.
And the motion was made by?
Robert Jacobs.
Anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
So we have motion and second. Any further discussion? You okay over there, Sue? All right. I see how the internet. Holcomb, please.
Deborah Addy is absent. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Hultunin is absent. Christine Holcomb is absent. Tom Kozel?
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Robert Jacobs?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickart.
Yes, thank you. Okay, item number nine is planning consultant report.
We're in the process, as you know, of finishing up the recreation plan or at least getting you a draft, the recreation plan. Right now Karen's been working diligently with your staff here, the supervisor's office and the building department to determine, uh, the cost and, uh, activities or action that they'd like to see. We expect to get that back to you shortly.
Thank you. Item number ten is ZBA representative's report, which would be Deborah Addy and she's not here, so we don't really have a report at this point. And I didn't take the time to go look to see, is anybody at the ZBA? Actually, I impose on Gary, was there anything at the ZBA that you want to inform us that happened?
No, not really. I mean.
Okay. I'm sorry?
It's good.
Okay, thank you. Item number eleven is board representatives' report. Mark?
Uh, nothing, uh, outstanding. Much you want to hear about? Joe carpaving sewer line, uh, ambulance smillage, roofing, US general bank obligations, North Star skid sprayer and, uh, saw grants. Any care to hear anything about any of those?
Sure, go into detail.
We need a special meeting now.
How about?
You should have guys so you can see on YouTube.
Yes, right, watch YouTube.
Thanks, Mark. Item number twelve is, uh, chairperson's report. Um, I will say we all successfully completed our citizens planner program.
Oh, you got through the whole thing?
One way or the other, we've managed, whether it was live, in person, via Zoom.
Yeah, I did it both ways, yeah.
Yeah, what, not Zoom. Well, Zoom, we did do it one time and then we did, you know, makeup classes, so, but we made it.
I think it's worth it.
Beneficial?
So, yeah, it was a good pressure for us.
Did they have all the books there you could just take?
I should have brought the big, big book. I'll pass it along.
I grabbed a bunch of books when I was up there.
Yeah, there's a big thick one up there.
Anybody care to come before the board and do a presentation?
That's what you gotta do.
I didn't go.
No, Chris.
You gotta do that for your master plan or whatever.
That's right.
Hey, Steve, you want to give? I missed your class.
You weren't there, no.
I was in Grand Rapids, so I'm sorry. I heard, I heard it was really good. Got high marks.
That was good.
No, it was, it was a good one to have, but there wasn't as many young people as in the past before COVID, it would be a packed.
It's one of the smart groups that I've taught in years.
Right. Seems to be a lot of concern about the twenty-six mile road corridor project.
There's definitely an anti-developing group that's moving from township to township, trying to get that project, uh, derailed. It was interesting to hear from all the different communities that were partaking in the class to see what their struggles are and what's going on in their communities. That was very informative. Cause it was a lot of different points of view and problems and.
The gentleman from Memphis seemed to have a lot of different things going on.
Marijuana.
Yeah, marijuana.
That's all he kept talking about, yeah.
Yeah, marijuana in Memphis, it seemed to be, so. It was interesting talking to the different people, what was going on.
Yeah, that's great.
It was good, good learning. Thank you for the township paying for us to go. Appreciate it. So, and someone's got to carpool. Celebrate your completing of a class. So also there are three board members that you're, I believe Cindy Babish should have sent an email out. I hope you guys received who, if you're interested in continuing on as a planning commission member. She gave instructions to send a little note to Artie and the rest of the board, okay? So there's three members for that. Um, just three.
Doesn't need you to go to just Artie, because I think the email that she sent out just said Artie. Cause I don't, I think he makes a recommendation.
He makes a.
Has to prove it. Cause I, I sent an email to Cindy and Artie.
Yeah, then you send it to Artie, then it goes, then you go before the board if he accepts it.
I think it's you, you and Christine. And then just reminder, as we just remembered, our November meetings are earlier than normal, so it's December, so just a reminder on that. Um, I don't think I have anything else for that, so. Item number thirteen is planning and commission member comments.
Anybody have a chance to drive the northern part of the township, the Marl Road and Stone through all there, all the colors and it's just fantastic.
Who wants to go on Marl Road, do a film on Marl Road?
Where I'm building.
Are they using your house?
Probably.
No, I haven't been that way, but back and forth report here on it definitely looks colorful now, so. No further commissioner member comments? Okay, kind of quiet group, talkative ones must be absent tonight. You can tell him that, okay? We're moving chairs around. Item number fourteen is public comments. Obviously, the rules have already been read when I started this meeting, so if anybody in the public wants to come forward and make any comments, please come to the podium, state your name and your address.
I just have a quick question.
Well, it's comments. I don't know if I can answer questions.
Question. Is there a difference?
Just frame it different.
Our class set is comments.
On the Rocks, cause we live across the street and you said entertainment, so I just was kind of clear on, does that include that they're serving and, you know, they have the tiki bar open or is this just music that you're talking about?
I think this would be live entertainment.
For entertainment. Would it, what's under the umbrella? Does that mean anything outside?
I don't have an answer for you, but I think what we've been concentrating on is the music request for entertainment, so, well.
So it's really not the bar being, not the bar being serviced outside or the people gathering and. That's not the question, is the music?
Right.
It's entertainment.
Entertainment.
Okay, all right, they're both loud.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Don Stewart, seven nine zero zero Inglewood. We live like fifty feet behind. We look at that bar.
Sure.
At the tiki bar. So we're fifty feet from all those people out there.
Okay.
So that was my question. I just wondered if there was, you know, if that's in, under the umbrella.
Does he?
Or is it just music we're talking about?
Close at eight o'clock now?
They're supposed to. They've been pretty close.
Cause I think it's in there, he's asking to go, keep it open to ten.
According to the special land use we did three years ago, I believe it's to eight o'clock and it was approved back then.
He wants that extended and he wants the live entertainment.
But when we did this, I'm gonna say approximately three years ago, there was no outside entertainment approved. They did have the tiki bar till eight o'clockish.
It was eight o'clock.
So, but that's it.
So that has nothing to do with serving and the bar, just music? They're allowed to have music?
No.
You're saying?
We're not saying they're allowed to have anything.
That's we're disgusting. Correct. You're discussing music, okay.
Yeah, we're disgusting along with the rest of the township because we have Cabana Blue.
Because they still have noise from all the other stuff going on. Is there any way you could do a noise study just to like, see if this is feasible for a neighborhood?
We are not doing any studies.
I know, but can, can't you?
I suppose if you.
I mean, we're only a couple of houses, but I mean, most of the neighbors don't complain, but we're like fifty feet from this.
You know what? We've done it as a group when we did Cabana Blue, which back then it was.
Yeah, they're, they're a quarter mile from any house.
You'd be amazed if you were here for those.
Oh, boy.
There is a lot of people here not happy with the noise that was gonna be happening, so.
The water, all that noise goes right across the water. Well, we're fifty feet from it, so you can imagine the noise. Like they had their little thing this last time and we had seventy on the decimal in the house, you know?
I would just encourage you to make your complaints to, encourage to make your complaints to the township and actually go to a township board meeting, too. Maybe the more meetings you attend, you can get their attention, because we're, we're only, we have no enforcement powers here.
Okay, all right.
But.
Well, that was my question about the.
We have no enforcement powers.
Outside, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other? Sure. Please state your name and address.
I'm happy to do that. My name is Mark McLennan. We own the property at seven eight six nine Inglewood. And, uh, On the Rocks is loud. And, um, also for vents, that's what he goes by usually. Their parking area faces his, his living area. And at night, when they, all the drivers leave, their living room lights up. And, um, we also, uh, run a business in the area. We have a vacation rental. Our old home is now one. And one of the things the ordinance made us look at is instead of the needs of our, uh, patrons or guests, we need to look first at the needs of the residents, our neighbors, because they live here. And I feel that as a business owner, that always has to come first. And things we've changed is, one, we used to, uh, book our house for sixteen people. Now it's twelve. We used to allow dogs, but even if someone has a dog on a leash, the neighbor's dogs get upset at a new dog. Dogs are territorial. And then also we've cut out allowing events like bachelor parties and, um, any other type of event like that. And I, I feel that is a good protocol for any business that is in a residential area. When I hear Off the Rocks being compared to, uh, 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 Cabana Blue, after we left last meeting, we, we went out to dinner there. There is no comparison. Their music is inside. It projects out towards the lake and the closest house is a quarter mile away. And then to top it off, their whole property is shielded by a, a fence this high. All that is sound, definitely. Okay? The Off the Rocks or On the Rocks owner has done nothing to mitigate sound. And is it too much to ask to have him look at some acoustic barriers? Yeah, I mean, if you want to entertain and I'm all for it because it's a draw for my home, right? And, uh, but it, it can't exist if the neighbors aren't happy. And, um, we lived on, at that address for nine years. And, um, the neighbors on that side of the streets, Doug Tilly, anyone along that side has always complained about the, the, the noise or the music. I, I mean, imagine yourself, if I pulled up in front of your home and opened my trunk and turned on my radio and played it for twelve hours, ten hours a day, would you like that? That's what it's like for him and that's the same thing they're asking for on their permit. But again, I would suggest that, um, it can't be about the profit of the owner. It has to be about the neighbors first. It must be.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and address.
Uh, my name's Joyce McLennan and again, I'm, that's with my, my husband, Mark there. Uh, we own the property at seven eight six nine Inglewood. We live in Shelby Township, five three two eight four Heatherway. Um, again, the same thing is, again, being a business owner, uh, we were new at this too. And this particular location is just, just like with ours, um, having events that will disrupt the neighborhood are just not good, okay? We, 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 we had a whole group here last year, if you remember correctly, for the vacation rental ordinance. This room was packed to the gills. Most of these people I didn't know and the one person lived, lives right across the canal from the house that we have on Inglewood, okay? And, uh, they didn't like things. We altered. We went through all the new rules and regulations. We had everything checked, an inspection. We passed the inspection. They came back. We did all the things that they asked us to do. And we're just saying that, uh, we were told on there, it's a one, two, three, you're out, okay? Let's say the neighbors complained about noise and the police came. We were told we'd get a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine and if that happened three times in a row. We were told we'd get a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine, and if that happened three times in a row, the price went up. And then, then we would be out of business for twelve months. Now, this guy here that's not here, he's had, not only Vince and Cheryl, there have been others, okay? That have complained, did they, were they ever told, one, two, three strikes, you're out? And you'll be out of business? I don't think so, okay, and we're just saying, with the location and the fifty feet outside venue shouldn't even be had over there, just put yourself in a place like theirs. You put yourself and maybe stay there on one of those nights, and you come by when you know that there's going to be an event, you come and hang out on the other side of the street, you come and see how loud it is, you come see if the lights shine into you, you come and listen to the laughter, the noise, the people being drunk outside, and the light shining up into your bedroom and living room downstairs, is that something that you want in your neighborhood? And that's something that if a neighbor complains, we had neighbors complain, they, what it was is, we never got a complaint from the police about our vacation rental, not even one. We never had a neighbor complain to us, not even once, well, maybe about a dog, okay? Okay, we'll say one, okay, but nonetheless, somebody comes and gives you guys phone calls, tells you, I don't like vacation rentals. Okay, you listen to them, you listen to them, you listen to them, you made something for them. You guys look into this and make some rules and regulations for this. It's a big difference between Cabana Blue aiming their music out towards the, the Munchies Bay compared to fifty feet across the water. And again, place yourself in that position, if you know there was an event going on that night, you go on the other side and hang out and you see what it's like, and bring your thing to measure the noise and see how you would like it. Thank you.
I also want to acknowledge that on October, we have an October third, twenty twenty-two letter from Mark McLennan. So I did, I'm sorry, I did not acknowledge that earlier, it was in our packet, so we did receive that.
And he had, I had watched it, yes.
Okay, so.
Thank you that you.
We appreciate that.
No, so, I'm sorry, I should have acknowledged that sooner, I apologize.
Well, we appreciate that.
Well, the thing we've seen is no, no attempt by On the Rocks to mitigate the intrusion that's going on here, I mean.
Kind of like we did.
Yeah.
We made changes.
We have to think about it a bit.
No, I get it.
But a line of bushes would take care of headlights.
Well, appreciate your comments, I saw somebody else's hand up, so everybody's going to get a chance to make a public comment if they want to, so if you'd like to, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Thank you, though.
I'm Cheryl Stewart, I live at seventy-eight, seventy-eight Inglewood. Ever since seventy-nine hundred Inglewood, sorry about that. Ever since the very first meeting, Tim has gone out of his way to make more problems for us. He has extended his hours already from eleven until nine o'clock at night. At eight o'clock at night, he turns the lights off and still serves, so he's I hate, I hate to be snitching on somebody, but he's just, he's not cooperating with I wouldn't say it's, yeah, it was kind of a rule, their hours are supposed to be that, and he's extended them an hour earlier and an hour later. I can't honestly say what's going on now, because it's cold outside, and, and nobody's out there right now. One day I had my music going on, and my house was loud, because I was cleaning, and sometimes the music motivates me to clean. The next day, he had a whole bunch of people over there that were laughing as loud as they could, talking as loud as they could. Basically, I think they were his friends, you know, I, it's, it's stupid, the way things are going on, and then another day, he had a boat out there that was playing the same radio station I was, and it was a Christian radio station, which I doubt, you know, a bar really doesn't play that kind of music, but he did, and it just seems like we're being hassled, you know, by, by him in ways, just the longer hours, and he'll get mad and, you know, have his cronies over there laughing, and the kitchen faces the bar, and I was getting a drink of water one day, and one of, one of his, one of the guys over there saw me and pointed at me, there she is, you know, so they made a bunch of noise, and it's, it's really aggravating, it's, it's getting more aggravating, it probably won't be because it's winter now. And to tell you the truth, I want to move. I, I want to move away from there. I can't stand it any longer, I just, I can't take it, and in my back pocket, I did my own decibel study. And I have my reading glasses, so I can't really read it, and they get up to fifty, fifty, sixty decibels just in talking. Not even with any music, just talking. And, and that's all I wanted to say. It's been a concern of mine, just, because it's driving me crazy, you know, to have to have this stuff forced on me, and it's, that's how I feel.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it, we've only been here before.
I don't mean to be a snitch, but I don't, I don't.
That's okay.
Just ticks me off.
Thank you. Thank you. Tell them on the back. State your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Corey, my address is nine five eight zero Nook. I guess my question was, when you guys mentioned entertainment, what was the, we came, we arrived a little late, I was wondering what your statute was for that? Because I heard, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, sir.
Don.
Don, he said something about the entertainment hours, I was just curious what you.
We, we have done nothing, if you're talking about On the Rocks, it's still the same as it's bad.
Okay, so, so.
We haven't changed anything, nothing's been changed, we're doing some more.
That's right, so, I guess we were saying was that, yes, I worked there the summer of twenty twenty, and I'm currently, I work with Tim and every once in a while, and we close at eight o'clock, we do not serve there after eight o'clock. However, it still takes you more than two minutes to close somebody's tab out, clean up your mess, we have to wipe down everything because of the B problem, and when I worked there in the summer of twenty twenty, my radio was a baby monitor that hung up in the rafters of there to make it just a little bit louder so you could actually hear it. Traveling fifty feet across on a baby monitor doesn't work. You can't plant shrubs next to a seawall, they're going to die. You don't have room to, you can't put acoustic barriers up because you got boat wells right there. But also boat wells are all the way down to the end of there, so yes, boats come out and they are loud. Tim has tried many a times to tell people, hey, it's eight o'clock, calm down, don't yell, come inside, but people smoke cigarettes. They go outside, voices travel. Can't tell people, you can't smoke cigarettes outside anymore, so there has to be a give and a take on both sides, and those restaurants have been there for twenty to thirty years. So it's all of a sudden now it's a problem because, yes, the people are having fun, people are laughing, people are having a good time. But nobody's out there at nine or ten o'clock because nobody wants to sit outside with mosquitoes either. But they would just like it actually to be fair all the way around. I mean, if other people can have their restaurants open till nine, ten o'clock with people outside, it should go around all for everybody.
Well, thank you for your comments, and we're checking into that, okay? Thank you. Any other members of the audience? One more time, any other members of the audience for public comments, seeing no hands? I want to move on to item number fifteen, which is adjournment. Motion, please?
Support.
A motion, Mark, support.
I'll make a motion for, to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, thank you. Tom and I'm Mark, so, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you, everyone, for coming today, appreciate it, see you November.